Good afternoon. I want to welcome everyone to this special call meeting Tuesday, June 7th, 2025. Uh, process of my new implication and I'm going to do the pledge.
Prove allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I have this question and consideration of voting on the following. receive an update from the city of Brunswick regarding the proposed transit system, Mr. Fallon and Ms. McDuffie.
Any else said?
All right, we have a presentation and she'll be ready to go. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. Regina McDuffie, the city manager for the city of Brunswick. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon to introduce the transit program. Uh, of course, I have some of my commissioners here with me, so just want to recognize them. Commissioner Sabey and Commissioner Atkins and Williams, as well as some other city staff. Um, the transit program, trying to make sure no other commissioners walked in. Thank you. Okay, so the transit program, of course, started um back in 2019. The Brunswick area transportation study committee um introduced the transit or initiated uh looking at transportation, um public transportation in the community. And of course, the city commission has been advocating for public transportation since I began working for the city of Brunswick. Um, it's an opportunity to invest in the community and certainly provide growth and development. The transit is um supported by not only the city's common plan, but also the county's common plan. The county's common plan states that um it supports an opportunity to provide alternative modes of transportation, including public transit. The city's common plan talks about securing funding and developing private and public partnerships um to implement transit opportunities. So the community itself has recognized the need for transportation. Um, wanted to talk about what we're proposing is a micro transit system. This has been looked at. We've had a consultant working and I'll have to actually recognize John Hunter, the city's planning and development director as well, because he's been working countless hours with a consultant to develop this program for the city and county. We, um, when I started, we had a proposal for a fixed route system. But as we looked over time, we wanted something that would be more efficient, that met the demand for the public. The micro transit system is a public on-demand system that kind of takes you where you want, when you want. And that's, it provides opportunities, you know, that a fixed transit system would not provide. It's a lot different than a fixed transit system. It has smaller vehicles, it doesn't have routes, less emissions, more efficiencies in getting people to destinations, and more effectiveness in meeting the needs of the community. Um, it operates on virtual stops, not on places, and it's similar to an Uber or Lyft's um program. It has similarities to other public transits because it does offer a shared ride system and it is affordable as an alternative for transportation needs. We looked at what the need in the community was, and there were several studies that have been done. There have been studies done by the hospital, there's been studies done for community needs through the chamber, um for business needs, there's been studies for workforce development. And each study that we referenced talked about the need for trans, public transit to provide stable transportation for the workforce, for um people in our communities. This show, this slide shows that we have nearly fourteen people in poverty. We have nearly eight thousand people, uh fourteen thousand people in poverty. Eight thousand people um with disabilities and possibly approximately eighteen thousand people, elderly people who may or may not have reliable transportation. It also states that we have approximately fourteen thousand people who commute outside of their residential areas on a daily basis. The studies um showed that in each area, transportation was a priority. And getting people to hospitals, to school for education, and other accessibility was a major factor in um the need that was shown in the community. The benefits of the program, we feel like it would enhance accessibility and mobility. It would provide economic development and workforce support. Uh, environmental benefits by having less cars on the road, less emissions in the air. Social, economic, and community connections for people to get to places. Um, not only for healthcare and education, but for basic needs. Also, it is cost-effective and will provide transportation for people who currently do not have transportation. I know most of you all probably have cars, but think about not having a car for a week at a time. I mean, I've been in a situation where I needed a ride and it's not always easy to get one, even if you have family and a location. So, you know, having cost-effective and stable transportation would make a difference in the lives of our citizens. So through this process, we went through a very rigorous selection process to try and identify a third-party operator to provide his service to the city. Um, we started last August by putting out an RFP. Of course, all of this process was vetted through the GDOT because um we are asking for federal and state funding, and they require us to meet all of their goals when we talk about um providing funding for the transportation. We received six proposals from our RFP and vetted those proposals. Um, in December of last year, we had interviews and reviewed those proposals and selected three providers that we brought to the city of Brunswick and um went through a review process. We did invite the county, as well as the housing authority, to participate in that process. Um, Stephanie Leaf, um, from your uh director here, is planning director, she participated. And Reggie Jackson from the housing authority also participated. Most of the providers that were presented um were from out of state. There were two that were from the state, and the two that we selected, the three that we selected to interview, one was from Florida, one was from New York, and the other one was from Atlanta. We are, um, currently, we finished our process with GDOT for them looking at the contract for our provider, and we are now going forth and hoping to go into negotiations to talk about the actual contract that we'll put in place. Our provider um that we selected is VIA, and VIA is a leading provider of public micro transit systems. They have systems in forty countries and over seven hundred and fifty communities, including Valdosta, Hall County, and Buckhead in the state of Georgia. VIA will be basically providing all turnkey services for our operation. They will provide drivers, supervision, a call center, customer service, um for our transit operation. They will employ local people as their drivers and supervisors, and they will have local contracts with businesses for the vehicle maintenance and for cleaning services. Their call center is not located or will not be located here, but they will have dedicated dispatch and customer service to serve the Brunswick community. Um, the boundaries or footprint of our route, and I hope you all have seen this map before. Key boundary areas, the boundaries right now will encompass all of the city. It will be to the west and include exit thirty-six and thirty-eight on I-95. It'll also include to the north, um Flexi and the airport, and looking to the east, St. Simons. Um, again, it's not a fixed route system, it's a system that can move its boundaries um because it's a digital base um system. And it's kind of like, I always think about it as having like an electric fence, and you can move those boundaries based on the data that comes in about the needs of the community. So those are some of the things that we still have um to earn out is just basically how we will service the community. And as the data grows and shows where we need to focus, we will be able to make some changes with the systems as needed to include, um, to make sure we're being efficient and effectively meeting the needs of the community. Um, the cost of the service, right now, the VIA contract is about one point one million dollars, and we estimate another hundred and fifty thousand for administration because we'll have a lot of oversight, as well as grant administration, working with DLT and federal highway um transportation to administer the grants and the program. Um, we are asking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for funding from the county. We have fifty-seven thousand dollars, we estimate, in fares for the year, and four hundred and forty thousand dollars of investment from the city of Brunswick. Um, as you can see, the cost increased, and it says year one, but year one may be when we start. And then about six months later, we look at, we will look at incorporating those areas um in the airport and the St. Simons. Um, but it's year two, we estimate, once we expand that route, the cost to go up to about one point eight million dollars. After year five, the cost would be about one point nine million. And as you can see, we are asking for increased cost um of investment from the county and the city throughout the five-year period. Of course, one of the most important things is that we are supported by federal funding um from the Georgia Trust and from the GDOT um funding throughout the program. Our terms of operation, at this point, we haven't set the hours of operation, although we want to effectively um support the job workforce. So we probably will start as early as five-thirty or six o'clock in the morning and go as late as nine or ten o'clock in the evening. But we have some flexibility in how those routes, I mean, how those times can be set, and whether they are peak times during um, you know, tourism time versus weekend times. We know the hotels and restaurants, we want to serve their workers in those jobs. So we will make sure that we are looking at those needs when we set the times for operation of the system. The system will be on a booking, a ride through a cellphone app and through phone reservations, but we also will offer passes and vouchers and things that can be purchased um either online or at various locations. The fares, uh, we are looking at two dollars per rider. Um, and sometimes if we have, once we set it, if there's distances such as to the airport or to St. Simons, those may be premier um rides and maybe at a higher upcharge. We will, we are anticipating the need for five to seven passenger vans to start off with, and these will be uh seven, five to seven passenger vans, but we think we'll need about seven vans to start off the system. They will be ADA compliant and of course have wheelchair accessibility. Um, throughout this process, I have talked with many of our partners in the community, um spoke directly, and certainly, you know, we want to partner with the county, you're our, our major partner. We've done some joint projects recently and made some headway in just working together. But we also talk with our major employers, including the hospital, um some of the hotels, restaurants, and again, they were very excited because they feel like transportation is one of those needs in the community that needs to be filled in order for us to get back to the workforce level that we were before COVID. We also have some other supporting agencies in the community, including the college, the airport authority, the Brunswick Housing Authority, the CBB. I want to read to you just a um statement from the housing authority. It says that the housing authority of the city of Brunswick provides affordable housing to over three thousand families throughout Glendale County and the city of Brunswick. Transportation is essential for education, employment, childcare, and conducting business for our families. They strongly support the city's effort to bring reliable and dependable transportation to Brunswick. Also a statement from the CBB. One of the most significant cha-challenges for our hospitality industry and our community in general is workforce availability. At any given time in the hospitality industry alone, there are over six hundred unfilled positions available, and our community partners must explore solutions to keep our economy strong. The Convention and Visitors Bureau supports creating transportation links for all our residents and workforce to readily access jobs and support our economy. Um. So. Okay, so right now, we are looking at our presentation to the board, asking for a financial s- commitment from the county. We will go to the city finance committee to secure our budget for the upcoming year and also work with our um contractors to review the contract from DOT for our uh service provider. Uh, we are looking at possibly launching the, launching the service in October twenty twenty-five. Again, this is all about economic vitality for the community. Think of transportation as just another economic development tool. We want to strengthen the economic health of the community, and I think that's a common goal of the city and the county. You all have shown unprecedented support by participating in projects with the city, by supporting the land bank, by supporting the senior center, and we just want to secure, you know, this particular aspect of support for the community. Just as our housing program is creating paths to homeownership, this service can support economic stability for those households and others by providing stable transportation. My last note is, I can't guarantee a lot about this process, but I can guarantee one thing, that every person that uses the transit system will be a citizen, resident, or visitor of Glendale County. I have a short video that I'd like to show you just to give some more information about um the service provider. I kind of wanted to give that idea so you can see the size of the vans, the mobility of it, and the useful efficiency of the program. That, again, thank you for the opportunity. I have John Hunter here. I don't know if John has any comment.
No, I just appreciate y'all's time today and listening to us again talk about transit. I think this is maybe the, the third presentation we've made over the last few years about this important need for the city. This has been a long process for us, and it has taken a lot of public input to get us to this point where we feel like we designed a service that addresses the needs of Glendale County. Um, and. Um, and we're really excited about this opportunity to help support the workforce, uh, of all of Glen County. So if you have specific questions, uh, both of us are happy to answer, uh, anything that you have for you today.
Lieutenant, you talked about how. When, when you start running the thing sound, restaurants are open at clock, eleven o'clock at night.
Yeah, that's something that we'll look at. That's one of the reasons why we wanted some time to kind of add that to the program. Because we want to meet the needs. We don't want to just, you know, provide some service that's not going to meet those hours of operation for St. Simons. So it may be a modified schedule that we use for St. Simons, just to ensure that we meet, um, those shifts that we know are going to run late or early.
Anybody else got questions? Tom?
Speak up. No. I can hear.
I noticed that it wasn't going out towards exit twenty-nine to the Brookman and the Fancy Bluff area. I know that there's a lot more. From what you were stating, that, uh, there's a lot more county residents that come into the city to work than there are city, than, than, than the two thousand, uh, city residents that would be using it. So I wonder why, why exit twenty-nine was excluded from this with the areas of, uh, Brookman and, uh, Fancy Bluff.
So Commissioner, I'll, I'll answer that question, uh, from Mr. Duffy. The one thing that we are restricted by in terms of where the service is provided currently is what's called the urbanized area. And that's part of the, uh, it's part of the census data, uh, that FTA and GDOT use to denote service areas and where you can spend this funding. So because of the funding source we're using, we're basically limited to the areas that are currently shown on the map. That's something that as we move forward, um, and we have more partners in this program. We could expand into using county funds, uh, or funds from other programs that right now we're, we don't have access to.
And I, I noticed that Jekyll Island was not even entered into this. And I know one of their biggest concerns is, uh, they, they're having a hard time getting employees over there because of, uh, the transit, they're not able to get people there. Y'all didn't, y'all didn't include those. And you know, I, I'm, I'm a supporter of, uh, of this demand transit, uh, I think, I think it would be a good thing, but it seems like it's got some limits to it, uh, hours of operation, uh, like, uh, the chairman stated. Uh, I can see where Flexi students would be able to utilize it. I could see where, uh, college students would be able to utilize it. I could see, uh, but you know, a lot of times, uh, you know, the later hours would be running.
Well.
Go ahead.
And I hate to cut you off, but the, that's the beauty of the system that we're looking at, is that the flexibility and adaptability. No, we didn't go over to Jekyll Island, although we know there are businesses and restaurants there. But we can, you know, as we go through the process and start, we gotta start somewhere. And where we decided to start was the footprint that we presented. But that doesn't preclude us from looking and continuing to work to make sure that we meet the needs of the community to bring the workforce to Jekyll Island as well as St. Simons Island in an effective way, you know, to expand hours. Um, again, it's a digital footprint, so it's not something that can't be changed, you know, just by us evaluating the system and then including or adding those routes.
But don't you think that Jekyll Island would, uh, be a contributing financial partner, uh, just like you're asking Glen County? Have y'all approached, uh, Jekyll Island in reference to this?
I haven't spoken directly. I've mentioned it to Mark, but I haven't presented it as a, because we, you know, weren't starting with Jekyll. We haven't talked specifically to you.
Oh, okay. And I wanted to know, your one fifty to three dollars, what is the process for increasing these fares with future, uh, fuel increases and inflation?
Well, that's what we're proposing now. Of course, again, we evaluate, and it's based on public transit. It's, um, we would want to recoup some of our costs, but as John said, we will look at other avenues for support and funding sources. Um, the fares themselves are set based on it being public and a very efficient, you know, way for people to get back and forth to work. Right now, it's, if you're using the system daily, it would be, what, roughly ten dollars a week? Um, for people, well, that's four dollars. Yeah, so twenty dollars a week for people to get back and forth to work.
Well, I, I'm just trying to make, i- it work for, you know, the whole county. I mean, I know you, you primarily dominating in the city uh, and, and St. Simons Island, but I, I, I would like to make sure that most people are benefiting from this, that, that would need this benefit. And if they're out in the, uh, Sterling area or the, you know, out in that, or my area, they, they can also benefit from it. Cause it's gotta be, it's gotta be fair for the taxpayers.
Well, again, we wanted to start somewhere, so we have, you know, the footprint that we set. But again, I think that's one of the things that we looked at was when and how we can continue to sp-expand the, um, area so that we can meet the needs of the community.
Uh, I, I noticed that, uh, Valdosta has a program that I think we're trying to model from. I noticed that, uh, I've looked at some of their, uh, their vans and they have advertising on the side of them. Uh, is that something that, um, that would be entertained?
Oh, yes.
Being, uh, you know, as contributing, uh, uh, revenue sources?
Yeah, there are advertising opportunities, not only on the outside, but on the inside.
Yeah, I'm just trying to re-review my notes here for you, but, uh, uh, have, have you got any assurances from any of your, of your other partners that you had listed?
Assurances for financial?
Correct.
Well, we talked with the college about maybe developing passes or vouchers for the, um, students. I have had a brief conversation with the hospital in regards to possibly providing passes or something through their organization for their employees. I haven't spoke with anyone else, um, regarding that.
Well, that, that's, there's some questions that's just come off the top of my head and I've kind of made notes for, for the.
Okay.
But I, I, I would like to make it fair, fair for all the folks in Glen County and, and the city of Brunswick. Cause I know that there, you know, for example, the hospital, I know there's a lot of folks that live outside of the city that work at the hospital and would be able, would like to be able to take advantage of, of this, of this transit system. And like I said, I, I'm in favor of it, i- if it works fairly and, uh, and we can ma- and make it work for everyone.
Well, we'll continue to move forward in adapting it to, you know, the rest of the community. But again, based on limitations that we have.
And with, uh, would, and would out, I know you talked about expanded hours, but would, in your program that you're starting now, would weekends or things like that be, uh, something that y'all would entertain?
Yes.
Expanded hours?
Again, that's part of our not, you know, coming in and saying we will do this. We're going to base it because the contract is based on the number of hours that the system operates. So when those hours are, will be set based on peak times and needs of the community. And so weekends will be incorporated in as well as extended hours throughout, you know, certain days.
And I, from what I understand, and you may correct me if I'm wrong, I know that, uh, the Valdosta system or the Loudoun County system, they also, uh, worked on a fixed amount of, of revenues coming in. And, uh, with that, they, I think they agreed to a certain amount per, per year. And, uh, has, has, because of that, they, they said, we're not paying any more than this every year. Has that forced their program to shrink because, or grow?
It, it hasn't caused it to shrink, but it has not enabled it to grow. So, uh, the feedback we've gotten from Valdosta about their system is their demand is higher than the funding that they have available and can commit to it. Um, and I think that's, that's part of the reason we're starting out in kind of a contained manner as well. Uh, cause you gotta learn to, you gotta learn to crawl before you can walk. And, uh, being able to be flexible and understand what the community's needs are before we start expanding into other areas. Uh, one of the things I don't think it was noted, uh, maybe noted in our budget slide is this program currently, first, it came in under what we had budgeted, uh, based on our, uh, based on our consultants', uh, experiences and, uh, history with these type of services. Um, it also does not max out our allocation from FTA. So we're not draw, we will not initially be drawing down all the available dollars that FTA has, that they grant to GDOT that we're eligible for. So there's opportunity to expand, but it's about how, how many resources we can pull together as a community to meet their matching requirements.
And lastly, um, the, uh, the administrative, I heard you mention a hundred fifty thousand dollars for administrative costs. Uh, would that be, would that be an authority, would be created to, uh, manage this, uh, transit system? Or would that be, or you're, you're saying this is, uh, being managed by the city?
Well, at this point, it's going to be administered through the city and most of that cost will be for our grant administration, reporting and oversight and liaison with the third-party provider. I think going forward, that is a question that we kind of contemplated, whether we would develop a, an authority to manage the system. Um, I think, you know, that's something that we haven't explored to any degree, but it has been brought up.
I along with several others, uh, of, of my co-commissioners have been talking for two years about the Hercules Pinova site and the opportunity that we have for a community improvement district. Um, this changes the landscape economically, the opportunity for economic development for Glen County and the city of Brunswick. Um, we are on go to, uh, pass a new budget. The general fund now represents forty-four percent of the budget, even though it's seventy-six million dollars. This compares to twenty-twenty, when the general fund was fifty-nine million dollars, that was fifty-five percent of the budget. Under a community improvement district, three, um, three targeted uses of the extra taxes that would be generated in a SID. Among them are public transportation, stormwater and sewage systems, and street and road construction. In twenty sixteen, there were twenty-five active SIDS. Now there, there are thirty-one. And the most recent one, and a real success story, is the Savannah Waterfront Community Improvement District, which launched in twenty twenty-four. Coming out of that initiative is another initiative known as Savannah Moves. Uh, that'll be Savannah's first citywide multimodal transportation plan. So with a, with a SID, the model is the budget growth is paying for itself. I think there are merits in this request, but the growth that would be achieved through the SID, I think, is more, the most appropriate way to approach it. And I see the opportunity that has presented itself with regard to the land mass right in the center of our peninsula represents about twenty percent of our land mass. It is a transformational opportunity. And that is what I see, I see this request as a great example of what that could mean. concludes my comment. Anybody else?
Go, go ahead.
Well, just a few questions, um, if I may. Regarding your budget, I've looked at your five-year forecast and the ridership, of course, would go up in year two because you're looking to expand, but it's essentially flat out to, um, year five. It's relatively small growth. And the revenue is, is essentially flat, assuming the two-dollar average per rider and, and some, uh, escalation on that. What is your main driver for the ridership and where you see that going?
The main driver is developing, um, you know, the workforce and the needs for the workforce. Um, we didn't make any substantial increases in that, just because we didn't want to overstate it.
With just one follow-on, do you see the ridership being mostly workers?
Well, we, with the transit systems that we were conferred with, the workers were a primary, um, rider. In our community, we feel like there will be need for people, access to healthcare, basic needs. But we hope that, you know, the worker, workforce is kind of our primary, um, ridership.
Thank you.
When looking at the viability of this, is it, um, have y'all made projections on what you think your annual ridership would be in this program? Uh, how, how, how do we figure what our payback, if you would, would be on this investment?
We haven't, well, I'm not sure of the actual ridership. John may have more details on that. But as far as the actual investment, there's a lot of data collection that we hope to have, just starting with the program. And as we collect that data, we will try and make sure we change, make changes to incorporate growth in certain areas, peak times, and that kind of thing. So in essence, we didn't, well, I haven't looked specifically at that. But we hope that, you know, once we get it in place, because we don't really know exactly how everything will run. But that was one of the things that made via such a good, um, third-party provider, was that they track everything that's done. And we can get, you know, just immediate information about the program so that we can make some decisions going forward.
And that was one of the things I was looking for. If they are collecting this data in other areas that they are, then they should know about how many, uh, riders, uh, how, how many passengers they had in a year, uh, versus the cost that it costs to implement it, to get some kind of payback of ride per share. Uh, cost per. But anyway, that, that was one of the things that I'm looking, looking at. And then, you know, I'm looking at your five-year projection. Are you looking for the county to commit to a one-year or a five-year projection here?
Well, we would like to establish a partnership so that we can move forward with the program. And not necessarily, we know that, you know, you can't commit anything past a year, um, based on your appropriations and your budget. But we are asking for, you know, support and commitment for the program throughout.
And, you know, it increases, a lot of that increases, the participation of St. Simons versus it not being in the first year. But the FTA's participation is about a five-year commitment and talk of what happens after that five?
I don't know how to answer that today's climate exactly. Um, it, we've heard very little about changes to the FTA and their formulas. Um, right now, because of our status, uh, from a census standpoint, our dollars will be essentially what has been, uh, allocated, what we're currently eligible for, which is about one point two million dollars annually. Through to the next, um, either that next expiration of FTA's mandate or the next census when they look at these stats again. Uh, but I've not heard any indication that they're looking on, on changing those programs in any way so far.
Well, I guess as citizens of Glen County, you know, we only have one model that of, of local history with transportation. And we, we know that that didn't go well. And when the three, I think it was a three-year commitment at that time. When it expired, so did the system. And, and, you know, without information to be able to, I, I, I think this Uber-based, if for lack of a better term, model is a much better model. But, but how are we to convince our constituents that this is a good investment for them? And the tax dollars they have, if we don't have that, that cost per ride and, and that allocation, that return on investment? I know it's, it's something.
I know it's, it's something that we're subsidizing to try to get the workforce back in and, and we all get that. But, um, but how much and, and what's our payback?
So I, I think that's one of the reasons too, uh, with this type program, uh, we're limited to that three-year contract. Uh, we do have the ability to expand it to five years, but right now, currently our contract would just be three years. Uh, but this type system, uh, one of the limitations to a fixed route system is the investment in vehicles. You make that investment in vehicles, you're locked into having a system for ten years. So, um, we have the, the flexibility and the financial ability to work within our means, really, within this first three-year period. You know, uh, we know what those dollars are, we've gone to bid. Part of my job and, and when we have, um, uh, additional staff on our side looking at this, is going to be looking at ways to minimize our investments in this, so that we are looking at outside partners and other grant opportunities, uh, because they are out there. Uh, but again, we're, we're at a starting point financially, uh, based on the bid process.
And one more question and I'll, I'll yield for, um, if, if we set, if we set the rate, you set the rate at, at two dollars per ride, whatever that is, how will the people pay that two dollars? Do they have the ability to pay in cash or do they have to use a card system? Do they have to buy advanced vouchers? What, what is the method for payment? Because a lot of the perceived ridership may not have credit cards or, or the like.
Yeah, all of the above. So cash, online, credit cards, uh, the ability to purchase vouchers in advance. The system is capable of handling all of those opportunities. And even if we have partners on the nonprofit side, uh, or on the workforce side that want to purchase rides for their employees or their guests, they've got the ability to do that and hand that out as well.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll follow up and I'll, I apologize for one more question, one more time. But if, if we are accepting cash, if you are accepting cash on that, how, uh, how do you account for all the cash? Is, is the system set up through via that, that they know what they're supposed to collect? And then, and then how much cash might a driver collect that would make them vulnerable to, to, uh, you know, being, being robbed?
Yeah, and, and they have security, uh, capabilities within the vehicles as well. Uh, so they'll be, they'll be tracking all, not only ridership data and fare data, but also, uh, emergency communications with their drivers at all times. So, uh, and, and from my understanding, they've, obviously, things happen, uh, but they create a very secure environment for their drivers.
Thank you, Mr. True.
Mr. Booker? Mr. Clark? Okay.
Um, Ms. Regina. Ms. Regina, I appreciate you being here today. Um, can you, I know we're trying to bury this about Austin, I've talked to some folks over there and they, they tend to like this idea. What's some of the success stories or some of the things that we may be wanting to try and, uh, uh, bring here that we've learned from about Austin? Is there any information that y'all can share as far as, uh, and maybe, um, and looking at, uh, looking at classifications, you know, workforce, we brought, talked about that. College, we've talked about that, um, with, um, folks needing to get to the grocery store and doctor's appointments. So I think we've probably got four different categories of where we're going with it. But maybe what is, you know, maybe let me back up. Maybe what do y'all expect to be the highest criteria in order, will it be? Folks needing to go to the doctor, the hospital, groceries, uh, workforce, I don't think so much. Uh, I have to agree with Commissioner Tosson, uh, I'm familiar with the port, I've worked with the port. Um, IAP, BMW, Mercedes, they're all struggling for work, workers. Um, so the footprint can be changed, I believe that's, and those guys are probably willing, they pay a personal staffer to find workers. So maybe a partner later on. But, um, where do you think categories sort of will fall out as far as Glen County is using this service? Would, do you anticipate it for groceries, medical or accommodation, uh, a little bit of workforce or college, even bringing college into it?
Yeah, basically, um, again, we looked at the workforce because we think that has a great economic impact, not only on businesses, but also on the households. But we also understand that people need to get the basic needs. So I think for us, we are looking at people being able to get to basic needs, healthcare. And, but the workforce is one of the concentrated areas because we, um, it's been shown that businesses suffer such as support because they don't have people in transportation. Um, again, we will look at how we can expand that footprint as we go along. But we have to start somewhere and we started in a concentrated area, the urbanized, urbanized areas, and then we'll move forward.
Um, yeah, I, I think, um, my, um, um, first, um, thought is that, uh, we all know this is, I mean, there have been, uh, a thousand studies around this. And, um, the, uh, need to get to work, the need to get to the doctor, um, the need to check on family, um, is there. But how do we, how do we deal with this? I think, um, and, um, I agree with, um, Commissioner Tosson about some of these other, um, places. Even, um, Janko Island and, um, and, um, the Brookman, um, west part of the county area, but it's a cost to it. So, um, my suggestion, um, with this, I think with our commitment to this would be, um, to create, um, not necessarily an authority right now, but to ask the, the county manager, um, Ms. Leaf and Monica Harden be a part of a team with the city, um, to, um, come up with ways for other funding. And to start out with, um, as soon as possible with that expanded footprint, um, to, to Janko, to the western part of the county. And so, and, and any other areas that you all come up with, I think. Uh, and I think we can find some money, if we go to the state together, I, I, I think we can get some, some support, um, for this. Because we, we have the data, that's, that's a given. It is how do we want to come together and get this done? And I think we're all there, it's just trying to figure it out. Um, but, um, one thing, I don't, I don't know if I, I push back a little bit about the return. This is kind of like recreation, um, you know, youth sports, uh, I believe. It's a value to the community that you really can count on. Um, you know, we don't know how many young people are kept off, um, from juvenile court because we have sports. Um, we're out of detention because we have recreation for them. And, uh, I think the same thing is for public transportation. It is not a moneymaker, it is a service we provide and it does, it drives economic development. And, uh, I, I think that's where we are. But I'd like to see the, uh, the county staff get with the city's staff with our commitment to get this done. Uh, and I agree with Commissioner Tosson, we need to get it expanded as soon as possible.
Well, I think that's, uh, I mean, that's certainly something that we would look forward to working with the county on. I, I really want to be able to provide some start for transportation and be able to expand it. And certainly, you know, working with Bill and, and Monica to help us, uh, move forward. We have no reservation whatsoever about that. Um, the one thing I want to say is though, you know, we're trying to answer a question and an action that both the city and the county has put forth as part of our plan. And if, as you all have given us more, um, information and thoughts about it, you know, we want to start and move it forward. So we will take all of that comment, suggestions, I think, which are good, you know, suggestions and comments. But that was one of the things that, you know, as we thought, we have to start somewhere and provide something that will be adaptable to the needs of the community. As far as the return on investment, I believe that, you know, as we collect data from the businesses and see what that economic development or economic impact will be, if we are meeting the needs of workers, you know, getting to work and then being able to take care of their families and then being able to invest in other areas of our community. So that's kind of the domino effect we hope to have so that there will be a return on investment, um, in this process.
I have one other question. What about on the tourist side? Uh, I don't know, um, is there a way to have, um, another kind of fee structure, uh, for folk? Um, I mean, because we, I mean, we do get, you know, three point six or something, many people, you know, here. And that may be a way to really fund the whole thing, depending on how we do it.
We are looking at, that's one of the things, you know, if someone's coming from the island that's not a worker or person local, some way to, you know, how they track through your zip code, um, having that fee. But even if they're not a worker, possibly having workers identify so that they will get the reduced fee. And then any other riders would have a, a higher fee based on the distances. But yes, that's something we've already contemplated.
Anything else? Mr. Miss McDuffie, Mr. Hunter, thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you all for your kindness, we appreciate it.
All right, next up, receiving an update regarding the Rise Rizley project, Ms. Fallon.
All right, uh, thank you, Commissioner. I think we have a couple of folks here, so Treese Hampton's here to talk about an update on Rise Rizley. I know Rita Spalding's here as well and several others, so, all right, over to you, Ms. Treese, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. And first of all, I want to thank you each and every one of you for giving us the opportunity to once again come before you to discuss our Rise Rizley, uh, historic renovation project. And then I'm also going to say thank you to Ms. McDuffie because I'm glad to know that there's something, something else that started back in twenty nineteen when this project started as well. So I know that the road is long, but I know it's going to be successful. And so with that being said, I do want to take the opportunity to thank, um, the group and the committee that's been working with us on this project, which is Mr. Don Myers, Ms. Rita Spalding, and then Mr. Mitchell Davenport with Lockwood, Lockwood and Company. And he will be coming and I'm going to give my time to him here and give him the rest of my time to do the full, complete presentation. But what I do want to say really briefly is I am glad to know, to say, to know that both the city and the county are working on transportation because we know, do know that that is a very, very important part of, of this Rizley project itself as well. Because we are looking to have, when it's fully developed, to have constituent services there. And then we also want to be able to ensure that our families are able to get to this campus in order to take advantage of those services. And with that, I am going to now turn over everything to Mr. Mitchell Davenport. And we will both be available for questions at the end of his presentation.
Good afternoon. Nice to see everybody. Um, before I get started, um, will you buy the paper copy of the presentation? I want to start by telling you a little bit about Rise Rizley. Um, it's not very often to get a chance to talk to, to everybody at one time and try and answer questions and, um, but as you can see, the goal for Rise Rizley is really twofold. One is to save a historic building that has got, um, historic value in our community. And two is to create a space for nonprofits and, uh, other entities that serve residents in our community. A place where they can collaborate and really be a one-stop shop for delivery service, a service delivery. This property is located kind of in the heart of Census Track Eight, which is, uh, our lowest income Census Track in our community. Uh, poverty level of fifty-three point six one percent as of twenty twenty-four. So, um, a lot of the nonprofits that already exist in our community are, uh, trying to meet the needs of residents there. So this is an opportunity to make it easier, more efficient and a one-stop shop. Rise Rizley is not a service provider. This is a, a, a place where, uh, service providers in our community can come and make a difference and, and do it efficiently. Next one is just some renderings we've had, we've, um, done. You can kind of see what the, uh, the, the finished product should look like. And at the bottom there, some of the historical, uh, photographs of the building. You know, I was brought in because I know development and specifically I understand, uh, tax credits and how to monetize them. I, I'm not a paid consultant. You know, we're, we're, later in the presentation, we're gonna, we're gonna ask you for some, some funds. And I want you to know that's not, that's not coming to me. I'm working for free. I'm motivated to, to get to closing. I don't get paid unless we have a project that gets to closing, gets built. Um, and then I might, I get compensated for developer and, and provide guarantees for the construction. We structured it that way because I believe that you get what you, you incentivize. And I, I want to see this happen and I want to make sure that funds are being used, uh, as efficiently as possible. But my role again, get the project closing, uh, development, project management and guaranteeing, uh, construction and delivery of the project. Next is, uh, color memorial. Again, current view, uh, down below with, uh, the new cleaned-up version. And a little just, uh, overview of site plan, um, with the additional, um, new parking, actually surface parking. Um, this is item number five, hydroponics, uh, we've actually niched that. That was, uh, in the budget, I think, for about six hundred thousand dollars. And as we start making the tough calls, that was number one on the list. But the object here is to, again, take a, a property that's fallen into disrepair, um, despite the, the best efforts, and, and make it something that's especially usable and serves the community. But I know one of the things that's on everybody's mind is just what has been done. I know this project started kind of two thousand and nineteen and I stepped in about twelve months ago. Really, the majority of the diligence required to mitigate risk has been done. And that's why I'm, I'm a developer, I'm in the business of mitigating risk and I'll have real risk, um, when this gets going. Working through with contractors, we know what work needs to be done to address the structural and environmental, uh, soundness of buildings. Um, there's still a little bit of exploratory, uh, work to be done. But overall, um, we have, we're able to, within reason, uh, come up with a, a budget that we're comfortable with, uh, and they can begin to back down from there. We've removed asbestos from the second floor, um, in the Rise Rizley, um, in the Rizley School Building. Um, there was, uh, some asbestos containment tile that came out. And the cost of the remaining, um, any, any, I should actually, any remaining abatement, um, should, will be included in the, uh, contractors, it is included in contractors estimate will be addressed during, uh, real construction. Furthermore, uh, there's been a structural condition assessment, again, that went into consideration with, uh, pricing, architectural, the schematic drawings and then, uh, the construction estimate based on those schematic drawings. We've got a hard cost of eighteen million, three hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one. Um, that includes a fourteen percent contingency, um, which will hopefully go down, um, as the plans progress and get tightened up and some of the scope, uh, finalized. And we've also got the outer survey completed. Phase one environmental is done, um, came back good. Uh, we've seen the project renderings. Um, and then we also had some preliminary conversations with, uh, potential nonprofit tenants. And one of our challenges has been, you know, the project is kind of stalled due to funding. We didn't want to keep going, get it going again so we can, um, start giving interested partners a real timeframe. Hey, this is when we need to be, uh, this is when we expect to have some completion. This is when we're going to want you to try and, they can plan accordingly. Hey, this is when we need to be, uh, this is when we expect to have some completion. This is when we're going to want you to try and be, so they can plan accordingly too. Um, some of those partners we've talked to, just for example, uh Morningstar, uh wanted to, is interested in having a counseling office. Um, Yolanda Neely with Magic One O Five want to uh have a, an office there for the nonprofit that she works with uh with kids. Um, obviously, Community Action Authority, uh their Head Star Program, uh slated in the Jackson Building. And one thing that I'm really kind of excited about is we started working with Gold Miles Development Authority to turn the kitchen in the Jackson Building uh into kind of a small business incubator. There are um businesses that are in the, maybe the spice and build, make spices and things like that that don't need a full-time kitchen. They can sign up, get time, come in and help uh residents build a business, but also generate revenue for the, for the property. We have been awarded uh one million, six hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars in grants and um other funds over the course of, since really two thousand nineteen. That's all been poured in to the property, uh or has been, some of it's just been awarded. Um, we're waiting on our final letter to actually show up. But we've, today we've applied for twenty-six million doll- over, over twenty-six million dollars in in grants. And that's an ongoing process. We've gotten the historic part one uh back and a project number four, six, six, eight, oh, has been assigned by the National Park Service. Um, all the buildings, with the exception of Linnah, are uh contributing structures, are going to qualify for credits. Um, and then we have, as of May the twenty-ninth, submitted the part two application. We anticipate out of that a reservation of twenty, twenty-seven tax credits. So we need to uh get construction going and so we can schedule a delivery with of the building at that time. What is to be done? Uh, to finalize the construction scope, we need to do some exploratory demolition. Uh, that's, I've got a quote for about ninety-six thousand dollars to uh get it to do it right uh with licensed and bonded uh contractors. Um, the architect, there are a couple of places they really feel like they need to take some walls apart, see, so that we can, you know, continue to mitigate risk. Um, be efficient in our design. And the floors in the Colored Memorial especially are going to require some additional support. So the contractor's number um is got a, a rather large allowance for helical uh pilings. So our hope is that we won't need as many as they they need, but um we need to finalize our uh AI architect drawings. That's about, we have about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars left on that contract to deliver this so that we can start construction. And then we've got to uh secure allocation of New Markets Tax Credits, which just plays a uh about depending on the size of the allocation we can get, we're looking for about two point one to two point two million dollars in equity and low interest loans from that. So why is the commitment from the project so important? Again, two big reasons. Um, one, there uh, the the Rise Rizley team really has been working hard to apply for grants. Um, and being able to show bona fide uh local government support, uh financial support really does have an impact and I don't have to tell you that. Uh, the county, you you gentlemen standing in um a- apply for and support uh through matching funds or whatever, all types of grants. It's the same thing for for us. So um having that gives uh bigger donors comfort that the project has your support and and can move forward. And Rise Rizley just needs that additional capital. Again, I'm I'm um, I'm a f- just a fee developer. I'm going to provide guarantees. I'm not gonna have, I don't have any ownership in the project. I don't have any backend. Um, for me to lay out a million dollars uh to get this project to to completion um is losing, is is losing money. The nonprofit really needs um your help to get over, to get us over the hump and to on the road to closing. Once we're, once we've got a, a path to closing and I can start putting some some capital in uh to help us close the gap and then provide our guarantees. This is our proposed timeline. Um, if at the next meeting you are amenable to uh making the commitment and working with me to finalize the MOU, um, we would follow a month, order the exploratory demolition, um engage the architect. And they're telling me four to six, four to five, maybe six months to get plans ready. And then um I'm assuming about three months really to get bids back and mobilize the contractor. Um, especially having things done at the end of the year. Um, with an eighteen-month commitment, that's a delivery of about September twenty twenty-seven. I live here. Um, the last thing I want to do is deliver a project that my community supported that doesn't make financial sense. Um, I've been ultra-conservative in our underwriting. Um, you know, we're putting replacement reserves in there to build it, build up. Um, it will have operating reserves from from beginning. It'll make deposits or replacement reserves, make sure that in the future, the economy goes up and down. Um, tenants, you lose tenants sometime, you know, we want to have funds in reserve in the project to kind of handle any shortfall into the future. Um, and, you know, we've had meetings with neighborhood groups just this past year affirming that the project, you know, the same project that we looked, talked about in two thousand nineteen still has support from residents and donors. So we want to, you know, this is a long haul um event and it's really, if I'm going to put my name on it, it's going to be an asset to our community. Budget and rounded numbers, um, including contingencies and things that are, um, you know, pretty, pretty frothy right now. We're twenty-two point one, give or take. Um, about a half a million in debt, uh permanent debt that the project would support, uh just for its rents. Um, just to date, we've got four hundred and sixty thousand just in private donations. Um, we're including the city and county funds from each of the city, um, and you, uh, this body, uh, eight hundred each. Um, federal grants, uh, private grants will be the the bulk of it. And then the federal and state historic credits. Um, I've talked to a number of uh in- investors that I deal with on state tax credits that also do um historic credits. Um, we're comfortable with that number. We've got buyers that are interested in taking, taking down those credits. Um, and then New Markets, um, we're, again, we worked through that. Um, we're expecting about two point two. Um, again, to make it balance, that's about right. Um, again, I can, I'm happy to go into uh more involved numbers with anybody if you really want to. Um, I prefer for this to try and keep it kind of simple. The ask. We're asking for your formal commitment of the eight hundred thousand dollars uh Commissioner Booker had set aside uh and designated for Rise Rizley. Again, we need it because it affirms that government support for our other funders. That's the uh, one of the first questions we get on on an application is uh, do you have local government support? Um. Again, that's going to allow us, allow Rise Rizley to keep that development process moving forward, allow us to get to the next step in order or uh direct the architect to uh complete his plans. It's going to help us complete, uh, maintain that proposed timeline. The good news is, at least based on the MOU, the draft MOU that has had input from uh city, county, um, I'm not sure how, how many of you have really been, had a chance to be involved in that, but um, the milestone, the the first milestone is um Alta Survey, the phase one environmental, need analysis, preliminary architecturals and preliminary construction budget. I can deliver all of that to you right now if you'd like. We're ready. The next milestone is really where the rubber meets the road. And it's, it's gonna allow us, getting through this first milestone is gonna allow us the capital to uh really step up our fundraising, do some more grant writing and the additional funds. Um, when architectural engineering plans are available, the construction budget and the part one and part two credit approvals. Part one's already done, part two went in, uh, end of May, we're expecting that, you know, in 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 the very near future. Um, depending on how staffed up uh National Park Service is. Um, with that, um, I, so I want to be sure, trying to address questions. I know it went fast and I'm happy to to dive into tough questions, if there any.
I guess one of the biggest is, where's the city at on project?
We have uh done a similar meeting with the city and we've been told that internally they're working on it. I'll leave, uh, I, if you, if you like, I can uh deliver uh information on flash drive if you prefer, just because I don't know if you want all this paper. But you, you can have the paper, you can have inbound notebooks delivered to you, any way you want.
How did you become involved in this?
Um, actually, the attorney um that has been representing Rise Rizley uh knows I live here, that he actually does, he does a lot of um New Markets and Historic and Low Income Housing Tax Credit work. Obviously, I'm in the credit business. He reached out to me uh on behalf of the board to see if I was, if I was interviewed, um, provided our credentials and uh they decided to to engage me.
This wasn't a bidding process?
Yes, this was, um, in, in South Georgia, there are only a handful of us that uh that do this, so. I, I can, they, they very well may have um provided, you know, interviewed other folks, I wouldn't presume of that. But I know they previously had a consultant. Um, I have not worked, I've never met, don't know anything about, and maybe you all some have met him, but.
I I'll, I'll give you this, you've laid out a plan which we didn't have from the prior. I mean, there, there's something here that we can actually see and understand how it's going to progress. But, you know, I, I think if the county's going to participate, the city has to also. Because, you know, it, it's, it's, it's an asset for the whole community.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I've been, you know, I, I've got, it really for, this has been the, the number one roadblock um for this project. It's been getting that, getting that, that nest egg, that, that, that starter, that capital to get us going. And it's kind of been the chicken and the egg, that the, the city kind of wants to see the county, the county wants to see the city, but it can't get everybody to, in one room at the same time to finish the commit. And I'll do whatever I gotta do, but um I gotta start somewhere. And I know uh Commissioner Booker has, you know, he's got funds that he was able to earmark for this and maybe that'll put some pressure on our friends.
Uh, Mr. Davenport, can you go back to the slide that talked about uh the reimbursement toward the end of the presentation? Uh, right before that one, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, no. Uh, no.
I think I.
No, I.
I think I went too far.
I think it was. Uh, when, when you were part of the ask and you were saying if uh
Yeah.
Uh, how, you know, the reimbursement of, right, right before the, the milestone one was the one.
Yes.
I thought I saw information.
Your reimbursement for development costs.
Right, uh, yeah. That, that reimbursement, that, that was the stuff that we had talked about earlier and and how to do that. But in your presentation, it, it says that you've, you've received uh one point six million dollars in, in uh grants from, from eleven sources. And on back through the presentation, it says, uh, y'all invested eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
Um, the other eight hundred thousand plus the five hundred thousand in debt, how, how, how does that play into the conversation? Are we looking?
Of the, of the one point six, seven hundred and fifty, um, we just got notice that it's coming. It hasn't, it hasn't, that, that is not in hand. Um, and it, but it, it, it's going to make its way here. Um, the way funding works these days, it's taking a little longer. Um, but that's coming and it is bound, it, it can only be used for hard cost.
Or hard cost.
Yes, yes, it is. The source it's coming from, there's, unfortunately, there's just no, no, no way we're in.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with this. Okay, and the, the reimbursement, you're, you're telling us that the milestone one has been accomplished, so you were asking for that?
Uh, yes, I'm asking that, I, I'm, I'm asking for uh about four hundred. Um, is roughly off the top, is about what that amounts to. Um, what that does is it allows the, the nonprofit to uh, you know, basically turn funds. Let us go and and start the next process so I can get to milestone two and draw down um our needs first to get us to the closing.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and, well, one more, uh, sorry, the uh, the seven hundred and fifty that's on the way, how is that earmarked?
Uh, it, it's, it's pure hard cost, so at closing, it's eligible for, you know, contractor costs, site, whatever. But it, it has, it has to be hard, it has to be a hard cost.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Perhaps a few more questions uh in regards to the preservation of the facilities there, the buildings, just from my understanding. How many square feet of usable space are we talking about?
Roughly, I got that. Gross square footage is a little over, call it fifty thousand. Uh, rentable square footage excluding kitchen and event space, um, just really office, school space, that kind of thing is twenty-three thousand, three hundred. Again, I'll, I'll share all of this uh in, with you and and the packages that uh that you requested.
Okay, and the intended use, uh, again, I'm asking these things because being a new guy.
Yes, sir.
Uh.
No bad.
Information is, is, um, the intended use is to have various service agencies locate their um purely just that kind of activity. I mean, that's the definition for the use of the facility.
That, I mean, that's the intended use if, you know, one of the things I would love us to be able to do is just get a, maybe a DFAX or, you know, some of our state agencies that are, again, working hand in hand with all these nonprofits. Um, and that, that's an entity that can pay some, right? You know, the goal here too is, you know, if I, if this was Mitchell Davenport's project, I'd be getting, trying to maximize as much rent as humanly possible. You know, the goal here is to make this affordable um for our nonprofits and, and, you know, make it nice, not fancy, but um but sturdy and a good place to, for people to come.
Right, and as you mentioned, um, some of his rental is in the business case for this, perhaps. You have that to share also is, is that income going to support the ongoing uh maintenance and operation of the facility?
Um, right now, that, the, then, right now, I've got, we, we're, we've got the rental assumptions. Uh, I, I rent a little office here in Brunswick. Um, it's not fancy. I, I'm at twenty-two dollars a foot annually. Uh, we've set this eighteen to make sure that we're below market. Um, and then, you know, we'll negotiate, uh, negotiate from there. But if one of, you know, one of our local nonprofits that needs a, needs a small space at a formal rate, we're going to do everything we can to make that happen.
Thank you.
But.
Um, yeah, I, I, um, thank you, Mitchell, for your presentation and uh your commitment to this.
Thank you.
I, um, there are a couple of other things I think we should consider um with this. And uh, and the investment um that can be made by EDA. Uh, I think Ryan has reached out and working
Yes.
with the project to do the incubation.
Yes.
But also, uh, on the space, um, urban farming, um, is going to be, um, done. We just recently, um, through Ms. Hamilton, identified a, a partner um to work with us on the urban farming that has a trap record in the Augusta. That has a track record in the Augusta area. Um they they are also working with the healthcare field, um with uh cancer research. Um and um this type of uh access, uh increasing the access to healthcare for this um for our families. Um that are most in need is is crucial, um and that's something that we're we're looking at as well, but. One of the things that they do is, they do it at a point that is profitable to sustain it. Um and to bring revenue producing, and that's one of the reasons why this group is um. We felt were would be so su- um supportive and and helpful with this.
And I I I support that, as somebody who's gonna be signing guarantees, um I'm a big fan of uh.
The other thing is, the the middle building you all see is the old library building and is also. Um slated to be a museum and gift shop as well, I don't know if that's been really calculated. In the revenue side of this, um but um working with the Historical Society, which um. Um we met with uh Tree Sess and also Scott um on this. Uh we really feel like it can be a destination site for many of the tourists um coming in. And so that would also help with this, uh sustainability um of the campus as well.
I I just, I think when it's done, it's gonna be a neat building, it's gonna, you know, big, there's big wide hallways, it's gonna be a a neat place to come and. Go to work, kind of that lofty feel, uh makes it pretty cool offices and I think uh, you know, we have. My hope is we'll have more than just nonprofits fighting over a a spot.
Also, the auditorium, um is a space for um, uh the campus can be used for training. And uh and it does have enough space, um you talked about the square footage on that. Hopefully, we can have a relationship with the college that they may be able to get. Um implement uh one of the general studies um courses um over there. Uh 'cause uh if I remember correctly, Ms. Hamilton, we're still gonna be doing the GED program on.
Yes, um Coastal Pines is still in fact, that most recently gotten um emails and had conversations with the executive director. Of the Adult Education Program for Coastal Pines, and she is very much ready to get back into the building. They don't know that they were there, and so COVID kind of shut them down a little bit. And so they are very, very much ready to come back to the space according to the ed classes.
So we can have Coastal Pines and um Coastal Community College. Um in the same space, uh 'cause if you got people in GED looking at people in college, they can see themselves. Often, when they go to the campus, it's a little bit more intimidating, uh but we can facilitate that.
Once I can put together a more definitive delivery time. I I I'm gonna have to have uh some pretty serious occupancy before the investors are going to, their commitments for occupancy before investors are gonna. Gonna step up and and buy their credits, so um that's a big part of, but it's just, it's tough to be able to do that. Until I can get the wheels going and and be able to give them a delivery time.
Anybody else?
Come on, okay. Mr. Cheryl, I'll just add, uh you brought up the question about the support from the city. Uh at our February nineteenth city commission meeting, we did unanimously approve to enter agreement with Rise Risley. Uh and MOU to support the project financially, um that MOU has not been executed yet, I think the attorneys are still working out. The coordination with the EDA and how that distribution will work, but I did wanna let you all know that we do support the projects.
Okay, thank you, sir. How those attorneys are, help me.
Okay, anything else I can answer?
No, sir, I think we're good, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity to come this way.
Yes, sir.
Alright, third, receiving update regarding recreation parks master plan process, Mr. Glees?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for your time here today, uh we'll uh go through this quickly, uh. Have Quincy pull it up real quick and give you a high level overview and then if you guys have any specific questions, you know, I'll be happy to meet with you guys. We can discuss further. So, uh you know, we're aligned with our strategic plans, this is initiative three point three point one to. Update the nineteen ninety three Recreation Parks Comprehensive Master Plan. Uh we sat down, conducted interviews with everyone from the board, got some priorities from you guys, so, you know, we'd like to see. New and improved facilities, uh we wanna improve connectivity through Glen County and continue to expand our recreation activities. Uh so, you know, a few things, we wanna make sure Glen County is a recreation destination, you know, for for our our citizens and. You know, for for our visitors as well, and we wanna continue to maintain our high level of customer service. Uh just a little bit of demographics, you know, we're eighty eight thousand population, steady growth, we're gonna climb over ninety five thousand in another few years and. Uh just something to note, you know, we do have a median age that is a little bit higher than Georgia and the national average. Just a quick demographic breakdown, so we do have a diverse community with diverse needs, so. We looked into a little bit of a gap analysis focusing on our community parks and thank you to our GAF department for putting this together, so. We have our four community parks mapped out here and we determined the level of service for those parks, so that's about a ten minute drive or. A five mile radius, so plotted out, we have some good overlap, good service areas for our existing parks, but. We also wanna consider in our population growth that we have, so the darker the the shaded areas, the higher population growth and. You know, we've got growth in the north and the west part of the counties and the north part of St. Thomas as well. So adding back in those service levels that we have. Um, you know, we we see we we are addressing the growth at the north part of the of the county with Northland. Uh but, you know, that's our most high growth rate as well, uh we are lacking some in the western portions of the county, so. You know, looking at some proposed future park locations and their service areas would be where those lie. We've also done some comparisons with our National Recreation Parks Association and then a few cities and counties as well, so we got Bullet County. Is a comparable size to us, City of Gaines was just a smaller county and then Coastal Community in Beaufort County, South Carolina, so. We're really in line, Lisa's team does a great job, you know, we we do meet a residence per park ratio uh that exceeds the national average. Uh we do have Life Island that skews over acres of parkland per resident, but, you know, if we really exclude that, we would be in line. And then cost recovery and and our staff dedicated to maintenance is right in line as well. So just a few highlights, uh we do heavily invest in our parks um compared to our our counterparts. Uh as far as our distribution for personnel and operating, uh we are a little bit more in line there with the averages. Uh staffing as well, uh we've got seventy four FTE, which is right at the national average for our population size. Uh one area we did identify that we're lacking and, you know, one of our goals is to expand those recreation activities. Is our indoor space, so we we do have less indoor square footage uh than our counterparts. And just a quick summary on our youth work participation, we do excel there, uh you know, with Beaufort County being almost double our size. And uh, you know, we've got got good numbers to support, so doing doing a good job. And so what we do for next steps, we will conduct some some engagement, community engagement, put up a survey. And then get some facility assessments done, that's with um, you know, what's needing to be upgraded and put together a list for you, so. Have you taken any questions, Lisa, Mr. Gentry here as well, so thank you for your time.
You uh you left Life Island off.
So those are our community parks, so we did with Life Island being a regional park that's.
But you also left off the one in Brookman. And I I know it's small, but there's one in Brookman, and there's also, yeah, Baldwin, and there's also one out at um. There's one in, there is one in Sterling, there's one out on thirty two where Raza lives. There's one on the north end of the island, I know they're smaller.
Yeah, so we we do have many parks, neighborhood parks, so we excluded from this, uh just as. Our community parks are the ones that really serve the the most recreational needs and service of the larger community.
When you talk about indoor, you're talking about like for basketball, soccer, that kind of thing, or or volleyball, that kind of stuff? Okay, thank you, Michael, any anybody else got a question? Great presentation, good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else got a question? Alright, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.